A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Westphalgarth.
Yes.
Sandham.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yep.
Notice Beckman is absent.
Public forum. Randy, did you want to address the council? I'm just guessing.
Has to do with your city administrator stabbing me in the back. Before you had me on my back and talking to Steve, and Steve gives me one hell of an ass chewing about the stuff in my property. He wants to put a building back there. He says it cost him seven thousand, and I told him I went out of this damn town. And of course, Mayor, you know it, Dave Waltman knows it, Mike, you know, and Mr. Sandham. I just sent Dave Nelson a message. I asked him if there's a building available. We used to show porn down there. We blew up a husky to a building. See if that building was available, put my stuff in. Anyway, now I wanted to get a picture from Steve, and now Dad's on me too. You had no business going behind my back and talking to Steve, because Steve's from Wall Lake and he had best to do his way hanging Lakeview.
Steve, you don't need to bash her. If you have something to say, just say it, but you don't need to do that. Please.
Well, I mean, I apologize for going behind your back. I was trying to, hopefully try to resolve the situation because I knew that we were having difficulty trying to get you to, I was trying to find a way to assist you to get your property to a place where the neighbors weren't complaining any longer. So I apologize if you feel that way. That wasn't my intent.
And my neighbors want to do, they want to do is give me a solid treatment to scowl that. That's all they do. You know, everybody knows the State Farm jail. Well, my neighbors are not good neighbors. They, nobody has ever come over and see if they could help me, and they're covering the wall and he's gonna cover my, hopefully don't get too much rain. He's gonna put the cast back on top of my roof. He's gotta do a shingle documentation for the insurance company. And so that's why my ladders been laying out there, and well, what I need is a pickup. A guy might as well be in prison. He doesn't have a pickup for stuff in him and go places. And all I have is a minivan. I'd like to buy a pickup, but... I brought some documents from last year. I got here. That was my income. I didn't have any W-2 or 1099, just social security. And I'll have some work on the side. And the baggage has, a workhorse got a truck, but you gotta have some, at least some part-time work. I was hoping to get some part-time work with the city, and that didn't work out. And I just can't afford to live in this town anymore. And I want to get out in the country, at least outside city limits. So I don't have to be humiliated and always somebody looking down on you.
Well, I don't know if anybody's looking down on you. You just can't have that stuff around your house. Is there some way to get it somewhere and pick it up or something?
I know.
You just happen to be on the road for everybody in the town to come to.
And see, that road, it used to be a quiet area thirty-eight years ago. Almost thirty, it would be thirty-eight this September when I moved in. Now, it's, another thing I was gonna tell you to do is change the main Lake Street to Drag Strip Street. It's Drag Strip Avenue, that's what it is. And you get those guys running around two in the morning with their beetle trucks, kicking in the turbocharger, making that whine and whistle. Nothing is done. That's disturbing the peace.
Well, we can have the cops take a look, but they can never be in the right spot at the right time.
I know, because they're all usually throwing over Wall Lake too, and that's when those idiots are going around my area with those turbos and...
So do you have a plan to pick up all that stuff?
Yes. What I wanted to do, I want to get some plastic lattice from the lumberyard and put about midway back in the house, where the house is, and put my stuff on the backside. And of course, some stuff I'll always get rid of, take out to the farm, because by the many stories, I got all kinds of stuff from the school in there yet. It's just been one thing after another.
Look, if you can get some of that cleaned up, I think that would take a lot of effort.
Yeah. Well, that's a plan by, that's my memorial. That's the game plan.
Yeah, I mean, and that would be, even if you can stack some of the stuff neatly in the back.
Yeah.
Because I had made the comment that the tractor, I don't mind, as long as you're mowing and trimming around it. I didn't have any problem with your tractor being there. It's just, it's the accumulation of items that are up and around the house that just, you know, even if you can organize it and get it stacked up right by, right up close to the house and make it a little bit more neat and tidy, that would certainly help a lot.
Well, if I get that whole husky building down in Jacobson, that's gonna be, I know, help out quite a bit.
That building is gone, Tony.
Is it? The husky building is gone? Oh, I didn't know that.
It was Van Madermilt.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe he has something else for me.
But yeah, I mean, and I think, I think the intent with your brother was to try and help you out with trying to find a place so that you could keep your stuff at your house, but so that it wasn't necessarily, you know, all, you know, in the yard, so that you would have a place to put your items.
But that was kind of a compromise, Randy.
Right.
You know, we want to work with you, and we want to help you out, and Steve had an idea of the shed, and that would, that'd be like having a garage.
Right.
And I think that would help with some of the stuff around the yard.
Well, a bunch of, a bunch of our brother have a garage or a shed.
Well, you know, you just don't have room for a garage on that piece of property.
According to Scott, I can, from the house, I can go west, where it used to be Webbers, now it's Moren Horse, idiot. If I stay inside his sidewalk, I can put up a garage.
Yeah, well, you know...
That'll be up to Eric. That'll be up to Eric if you're in the right hands. If you have...
The biggest thing is we were trying to get it, because a garage takes time, so we were trying to, I think Steve was trying to find the most...
Economical.
Economical and immediate solution that would benefit you. But, you know, it's certainly up to you. I just don't want us to have to issue a nuisance abatement order and/or get to the point of having to visit with the attorney and take you to court. I was trying to work around that so that we could get something done before, you know, it got to that. So, and I apologize if you feel like I was overstepping, and I do apologize.
And that's the way that Steve did it too. He just came in the house to either start throwing his arms up and yelling at me and stuff like that.
Well, we want to work with you, Randy, and we want to get it done in a timely fashion at the same time.
Right, right.
So, you know, if it involves Steve, we're asking you to kind of work, we could all work together to get it done, okay?
What I can do, lack of generator, I took the ramps off the south end, that's why I used, I had a, you have to wait, neither did replace, but here's the goal, I took the ramps off now, I'm not gonna put them back temporary. I can roll that generator up the ramp, back to the van end, and then wheel that ramp to the back of the... That's, I do need, I need some part-time work so I can get it to my self-truck.
Well, good luck.
Yeah.
Just keep working on it if you would.
Yeah, and one day, Dave, last year, you approached me if I needed any help, and at that time I didn't. I know what I did, sent you a message with this the other day. But in a year's time, a person tells, getting to go south very, very fast. And I could use some help, so...
We'll see what we can do, okay?
Okay.
All right. But let's work together.
Right.
Not everybody's gonna get everything they want, but everybody's gonna get some of what they want. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check with Chris tomorrow on the price of that lattice, and then, like you said, there was kind of, well, the old two bottom plows back to the east, lumber's back to the east, kind of blocked them in too.
Yeah, if you could just, if you could get it kind of organized and put together up there closer to the house in the back and make sure that you're mowing and trimming around it all, that's the bad part is why, that's kind of why we thought that maybe the shed would work for you, so that it was, that you could make sure it was getting all mowed and trimmed so that it looked nice.
Yeah. And last time I was, it's been a while since I've been here. I mentioned Big Don up here southeast of the school has all that wood, firewood. And there's always stuff around there, and there's other properties around towns too.
Oh, definitely, and we're working on them.
We're working on all of them, but you have to, you have to work with us, Randy, okay?
The only thing is, when, when north and south neighbors come outside, I gotta go inside.
Yeah.
I go inside, I go outside when they're, when they're out and about, when they're gone and...
And there's not a lot we can help you with there.
That's my recess.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Let's work together.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections? Not least to approve.
I'll make it second.
Roll call.
Sandham.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Frank. Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Administrator report.
I really don't have one, I guess. We just, we've been working on trying to... Yeah, I'm really at a loss today, so, yeah, we've just been working on a bunch of stuff. Been working on the communities that are primarily, Mary's kind of been helping me with that and Angie Bennett, so we've been trying to get some colors and stuff going with that, so...
Okay, how about the public works report?
Citywide cleanup.
Strange guy over there.
Hey, I lost five pounds. Citywide cleanup, cleanup of ladder branch FL, ran interduct and pulled wire, set a pole at Houdini's because it was leaning and made it a little bit safer with the new pole. Repairs a campground post that was removed, leak in the bathhouse. The lock-in bathhouse number one in the storage area broke, so we replaced that. The pond down there was clean, all the leaves and debris that was in there was taken out. Fixed the pump, made sure that that's working, shut off curbside because of a water leak. Hung banners, worked on generator at the shop to open the doors. Cleaned fire rings, mowing, locates, changed breakers, connected wires, set a grave, hooked up secondary at a resident, reattached a meter at a house that was disconnected so they could place new siding, worked on motor issues at the campground, brush pile. Dug in and ran wire for the new construction on Hanson Street, set a pole in the basement east of town, backed out the lines, our lines are electrical lines, so when they installed the new gas line on Lake Street and Lake Shore, they didn't hit our power lines, because that's a pain to fix. Worked on the streetlights that were, the wiring that was damaged during the initial construction, our destruction of the laundromat, hydrant flushing. Cleaned up the dump, cleaned up some boards that held the screens on, turned some water on, turned some water off, repaired some damaged equipment. Spread some stuff at the fire, substation to kill weeds that Mid-American provides us. Took Teresa's old bathroom apart. We had an employee at class learning some stuff. Evan, he actually said he came back and learned quite a bit. Today, we fixed a water main break that was discovered over by Provost. Patrick with Vortex, the splash pad company was here today. We went through the splash pad, make sure everything's good to go, ready to go. Cleaned the diaphragms. He gave us a lot of training, so hopefully we don't have the issues that we had last year where equipment runs and it's not supposed to. And if it does, he showed us how to fix it. Put up the volleyball nets down at the campground and turned the water heaters back down after we were told a couple weeks ago they were too cold, now they're too hot. So, we'll just continue to work forward. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
And you got a new truck.
And we did get a brand-new truck. Our 450 finally showed up after, since September, so...
Looks good.
I will backtrack, and I will say, I did have orientation for the summer seasonal help at the campground. I think things are going good down there so far. They helped them kind of get some stuff organized and get it going, so I think we're in good shape for the weekend, so.
Thanks, Walter. Okay, we got two building permits. I think we ought to do the first one first. Austin Stubber has a deck.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Roll call.
Frank.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sandham.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Okay, what is the information on the 124 Lake Street steps and concrete?
Do we have that one? Did we copy that one yellow sheet?
Yeah, that should be in the package. I mean, it's not yellow anymore, but...
Nice piece, this one right here, eighty-two.
Oh, okay.
That was the old one.
Well, that was the old one. There was a new one that was, that has, that was gonna, that was kind of describing what they were gonna do now. It was basically, I went over there and then I, you know, I talked to Eric about it, and the... Eric, maybe you can help me describe to me the current, the current steps that are there. That platform comes out what, two feet?
Well, what is currently there?
Right, so basically what, what we tried to compromise to was that he could come out, come over the existing steps, and it would be a, he'd come out four feet, which is basically to the end of what was existing of the concrete there now. Come out four feet, and the length of what the existing was, that would include the two little pillars, you know, the stairs, and there were two pillars on the sides. So make it that wide, come out four feet, and then take the steps down four, then the steps would come out a different, another four feet, but with the stair down, it was then only gonna come out an additional seven, or a total of seven, so another three. So I told him, I said, I can bring that to you and see if that would work to compromise between, you know, what, what they have existing, because they can't take out what's existing because it's part of the foundation, and it would be extremely difficult and expensive. So I tried to compromise with them to say, okay, if we did this, would, would that suffice according, you know, and Eric thought it would work against with what the measurements were, you know, on both sides? Because basically it would be, take what's existing so that they could cover it up, and then come down the stairs.
So they're actually gonna go out with the bottom step another three feet, you're saying?
With, well, yeah, so the, where the bottom step would land would be coming out, so you'd come out the four feet with the platform, and then it would go down and probably be another extension of three.
Because their house actually sits closer to the street than any of them along there.
Right.
So putting this... By rights, we should send it to the board of adjustments if they're not building exactly where they was. I mean, that's a decision the council shouldn't be making, it's a decision the board of adjustments should be making. What I would suggest is if they can mount that platform four foot, run the stairs either north or south instead of all toward the street, but it's not...
Right, yeah, I mean...
I mean, you're, you're building bigger than what's there, and it's already not within compliance of our new ordinances. I mean, that was, that was already grandfathered in, what's there. But we're gonna extend it, and that's not a decision that we should make.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to, because they had their contractor here, I was trying to see if I could come up with a compromise in between without them, I guess technically having to go, you know, with, with a variance hearing on the matter, but I guess, I mean, that's the council's decision if that's what you want them to do.
And that's my opinion, I mean, that's...
Right.
What's the rest of the council think? On the agenda?
Well, if he's, if he's still within average, thirty-one and a half feet is the average of everything, and he's gonna be at thirty-one?
No, the original plan he had, he didn't come out too far. You know, because the thirty-one foot setback basically runs up to his overhang on his house.
Oh, okay.
You know, but, but I don't really see a problem with the extra steps, because anything under eighteen inches on your steps leading down from your house don't count. You know, it's because you gotta be over eighteen inches before you start saying that's what they're building. You know, so the bottom step would be six inches off, six or eight inches tall. The next one would be the same, so it'd be, the second step in would be twelve inches high, fifteen. And so all we're gonna have is that, the landing and the two top steps would be, still not in compliance, but... But I don't see how you can not allow a person to put in the replacement steps on a house they're remodeling to look like.
What they have there now, though, is there isn't no platform. And they want to come off more feet, and I fully understand it, because I battled this when I was doing construction. For safety hazards, you don't want to be backing down the steps to open up the door.
Right.
But...
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think there's, what there is, is like, there's now like a two-foot platform, and then the thing that's kind of catching them is the, I want to say they're planer boxes, but they aren't really planer boxes because they're, they're solid. It's where you could put, you could set planners on them, on the sides, and those extend out a little bit further than that top platform. Those actually come all the way out to almost like the, the bottom step, almost, is what they come out. So that's why, in order for him to even start the stairs, he's gotta come with the platform, he's gotta come out the four feet and then start the stairs down, or else that's what I would have recommended, that they shorten up that platform, but there's no way with those two concrete pillars on the side to be able to do that. But, I mean, yeah, it's, I was, I was trying to reach a compromise to, to see if we can make something work.
So what would you like to do with that application? I'll make a motion to accept it. You second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Roll call.
Sandham.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Waltman.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Eric, for all your efforts, and Theresa.
Thanks for the compliments.
Okay, we have a pay application number one for Sandy construction. I need the motion to pay that.
I'll make it. Second.
Roll call.
Sandham.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we have Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three campground posts.
So, with the idea that we wanted to kind of implement a campground post thing, we would like to appoint, or I recommend to appoint Mark and Tammy Allen and Tom and Nancy Lampy as the campground posts for the 2024 season.
So we'll...
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Waltman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Sandham.
Yes.
Seatbelt policy.
Is it not? Is it not in there?
Page twenty-six.
Oh.
It's the one before the resolution.
Okay. So, in speaking with IMWCA and going through our little audit that we had, they really wanted us to update our seatbelt restraint policy to their model policy. So this really, I mean, we had a policy in place, but there were a few caveats in it that they did not care for, so this is basically updating it to what the, the standard is to their model policy. I think we had a kind of a caveat in the old policy that said that if they were, if you were getting in and out of the truck and making frequent stops, that you were exempt from the seatbelt policy, and that is not IMWCA's thinking.
So they would like us to approve this seatbelt policy?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
To our best interest, I'm sure. You second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Sandham.
Yes.
Okay, we want to have a little discussion on the draft of the ordinance establishing a board of the community center.
And I had one almost done, and have you ever had a document that just went whoa, exploded in face?
Yes, I have.
So, um, let's see. It's not that. This is pretty close to it, yes. Okay, so it looks like I've got most of it, the last part of it, yep. We'll get some copies, make talk some over.
Under Brian, I talked to the contractor today. They should be here Thursday to put that new roof on the wastewater building. The electrical portion of it should be done, hopefully by the end of next week. They're waiting on a part, and then they will schedule to come and do the electrical portion of it. We did have some fixes done to the computer programming. We found out during that power outage, our blowers would not reset and start. So if we get the alarm and we're in the middle of something and we can't get up there right away, our blowers wouldn't start. So that could be thirty minutes, that could be forty minutes before we get back up there to get them started with the generator running. So we had the program tweaked, so now they work. We also found out that when we lose power like that and we go on the generator, you have to reset everything in the building, and then you have to drive down to the lift station down there and reset everything down there before everything will start back up. We fixed that also. Now we can reset everything in the building, and it will start up for us at that point.
It's probably good that accidentally happened.
Is there a street light that doesn't work on the southeast, southwest corner?
Uh, out at the plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the electrical issues that are being taken care of, so...
So how far away are we from having everything done?
Those are the two last items, the electrical and the roof. And then we should be able to be done.
And the side off on that, you still comfortable about doing that?
From where we're sitting at this point, yes. We had some other little program tweaking done that is more to my liking than not necessarily what, the way it was designed. When, when we switched the generators, the system would automatically switch from transducer to floats. Well, the floats are higher up, so now we're putting twenty feet of water, wastewater in that lift station just because we switched over to generator. Well, the floats are supposed to be a secondary backup in case it really hits the fan. So we had it tweaked to where the transducer, it doesn't do that switch over until it gets too high, and then the floats will take over. But this way it'll kick on, and we don't have to try to pump thirty feet of wastewater out of that lift station at a time. During that power outage, we were pumping about twelve hundred gallons a minute at one point when all three pumps kicked on. That's a lot of wastewater. So... Jackson Street and Knight met with Bob Bistra. You can see where the asphalt, they sloped it so much, and then they didn't do the gutter. The asphalt was supposed to go directly up to the curb according to the plans and specs. We've been arguing with them since I started, because there was also a really sharp lip right there, and we were gonna catch a snow blade or something on that and just hurt something. We worked with them to have this fixed. The general contractor showed up and said, yep, we'll, we'll grind out nine feet by twenty feet, fix it, do it correctly. The subcontractor called and was not a very happy camper, and thought that we were just blowing smoke up his rear end and that he wasn't gonna do it. So I reached back out to Bob Bistra and told him how content I was with this individual, and we have another contractor coming to do the work and not him. It'll actually be Ten Point who did our Lake Shore project. So they did some good work for us. So they did some good work for us over there, so I'm fairly confident we should be able to get it done and done correctly.
Okay, so, um, this pretty much is kind of what I have put together, is kind of stealing from a couple of different ordinances from other community centers. So, chapter, the twenty-six point oh-one, basically, the community center is established. And so, the Lakeview Community Center was developed as a public-owned and operated multipurpose recreation activities and events facility that will serve both the needs and interests of the Lakeview community and its residents and also bring people to the community for tourism and other events that will further economic development in Lakeview. The facility shall be known as the Lakeview Community Center or any other such name as designated by the council and the board. Then point oh-two, were created, there was, created a five-member community center board here and after referred to as the board for the purpose of making recommendations on the operation of the community center consistent with the terms and provisions of this chapter, board members shall serve without compensation but may be reimbursed for the actual expenses incurred in the performance of their office. The main objective of the board shall be to make recommendations on the operation of the community center in a professional and business-like manner as to generate optimum revenues from the facility while minimizing the expenses. The board's principal goal shall be to recommend ways to keep the operating subsidy from general tax dollars to the lowest possible amount while simultaneously maximizing the facility's beneficial impact on the city's economy. And then point zero-three, if anybody has any questions in the middle of me reading this. The community center board shall consist of five members, five members residing within the ESAC Community School District or other individuals having pertinent experience that will aid in successful operation of the community center shall be appointed by the mayor. To the board with the approval of the council. One council member shall be appointed by the mayor to the board and said members shall have voting authority. The city administrator shall ex officio be a non-voting member of the board. All appointments to the board are for five years except to fill vacancies. There's some of them that were staggering, like if you wanted to do like a three-year staggered versus a five-year, you certainly have, you know, there's options there. All appointments to the board are for five years except to fill vacancies. Each term shall commence on July one. Appointments remain in such a matter as to stagger the terms so that as nearly as possible, one-third of the terms will expire every two years. Board members shall be people who by virtue of their background, educations and experience have demonstrated their ability to accept responsibility and to use prudent judgment. Organization of the board as soon as possible after the appointment of the initial members. The board shall organize for the transaction of business, elect a chairperson, a vice-chairperson and such other officers as it deems necessary and adopt by laws and regulations to govern the proceedings of the board. The city administrator may not be an officer of the board. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. All actions of the board shall by either resolution or motion and the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present shall be necessary for the passage of either action. Meetings and minutes, the board will generally schedule at least one public meeting each month or as circumstances require. The notice of the meetings and the conduct of the meetings shall comply with the applicable open meetings laws. Minutes of each meeting shall be kept and all resolutions and minutes shall be opened to public inspection consistent with applicable open records laws. Responsibilities of the board, the board shall make recommendations to the council and the community center manager on the operation of the facility. Specifically, the board shall make recommendations on the following matters. The rules and regulations for the operation of the facility, the purchase, lease, sale or exchange of personal property for the benefit in efficient operation of the facility, the rates and fees for the use of the facility and services, advertising within the facility and on behalf of the facility, the events held therein. Applications for and acceptance of grants or subsidies from any other unity of government. The procurement of insurance as felt necessary for the protection of the facility, how to actively market and advertise the services offered by the facility. Acceptance of gifts, donations, devices and requests that may be made to the city for the purpose of establishing, increasing or improving the facility, the expenditures of the facility's revenues and the principal funds allotted to the facility, the types of events to promote or co-promote activities and events held at the facility. The employments of a competent person as general manager of the facility who shall be the administrative head of the facility. Such other matters as may be reasonably necessary to provide for the operation and marketing of the facility in the adjacent parkland, scratch that. Notwithstanding the foregoing limited responsibilities of board, the council reserves the right to, and the extent permitted by section three ninety-two point one of the Code of Iowa, to delegate to the board such additional temporary or permanent powers, authorities and duties, including but not limited to rulemaking authority as it may deem reasonably necessary for the efficient operation of the facility. The council may make such delegation by motion, resolution or ordinance. Responsibilities of the general manager, it shall be the responsibility of the general manager to publish and make known to the public the schedule of fees and charges for all services offered at the facility and the rules and regulations governing the public's and promoter's use of the facility. Cause the preparation of an annual financial audit through appropriate city channels covering program activity and financial status and deliver the same to the council within sixty days of the end of the fiscal period. Deposit all monies received with the city treasurer to be credited to the facility and make all disbursements utilizing the claim and warrant procedures of the city. Utilize the city's policies and procedures and the personnel administration of all facility employees subject to any outstanding labor contract. Make all purchases of materials, supplies, equipment and services reasonably necessary for the operation of the facility in accordance with city purchasing policies. I'm not sure what that word's supposed to be, but the clerk for public inspection and transmit to council copies of agendas and minutes of all board meetings and resolutions duly passed by the board within fourteen days of the meetings at which such action was taken. It exploded on me before I was able to do a spell check, so I apologize. Prepare an annual budget for review and recommendation of the board to be transmitted to the council for approval and adoptions. The budget shall include all proposed expenditures of facility revenues and municipal funds allotted for the facility. The approved budget will be the working document for the administration of the facility. Utilize all the available services provided by the city and refrain from duplicating them. Employ such persons consistent with and authorized in the annual budget as approved by the council. Authority of the general manager, the Lakeview Community Center general manager shall report to the city administrator. The council recognizes that the general manager must have certain authorities to promote the use of the facility, which is on the page that I, that's where I stopped. Therefore, the general manager shall maintain the following authorities subject to such limitations as the council may from time to time impose. To advertise the facility locally and regionally to maximize use. To lease and schedule events at the facility on such terms and the general manager determines will maximize revenue to the city. To enter into contracts to promote and co-promote events at the facility, including contracts involving the pledge of money and guarantees. To authorize payment of fees to persons and organizations performing at the facility. To arrange for food and beverage services at the facility under such terms as to maximize revenues to the city. To enter into agreements with off-site ticket sellers to sell and promote ticket sales at the facility. To purchase contracts of insurance as may be required to comply with requirements of individuals and organizations using the facility. To submit bids which may include guarantees and warranties to acquire conventions and similar events for the facility. To enter into contracts with sales representatives for various services to be performed on behalf of the city for the operation and events center facility. And then removal of the board, board members may be removed by majority voted council. Then we go back to the document where it says community center accounts, all money appropriated by the city council from the general fund or any other fund for the operation and maintenance of the community center shall be set aside in a fund for the community center. Expenditures shall be paid for only on orders of the board signed by the city clerk. The warrant writing officer is the city clerk. The board shall make a report to the city council immediately after close of the municipal fiscal year. The report shall contain statements of the condition of the community center, information of types and numbers of events held, the amount of funds collected, the amount of money expended in the maintenance and operation of the community center during the year, together with such further information required by the city council. This might actually be a redundant item to an item up above. So that's kind of the working draft in a nutshell. I know that there was some concerns about having a council member sit on the board. I mean, that would be, I guess, up to the council if you want to have a member of the council sit on the board or if you would rather have that person just be a regular outside person. That can be changed very easily. And then how you want to have, I guess, the terms and the length of the terms would be a question if you wanted to change that or if you felt, or if you feel five-year terms are appropriate.
What's the library board set up as?
They're staggered too, I think.
Yeah, you need to have them staggered, but I'm not sure. I don't know how, what, I would assume they're probably five-year terms. The library board, are they five-year terms?
Five years and they're staggered, yeah.
There are no council members on that. There's no council member on any board.
I thought they should be, just like the mayor would sit in on the meetings and not vote.
They could be liaison. You know, anybody can come and work.
Typically, it's not a voting position.
Yeah. Right, there's, I took this from other community centers that have a board, so there's some that have it, there's some that don't. So this was one that happened to have it. I talked to the administrator and he seemed to, actually, they have a sovereign, they have a sovereign member board and they have two council members on the board and they said it works very, very well. Now, that being said, I don't care.
Keep it simple. It sounds awful complicated.
Well, because then you got a large amount of things changing. I don't think that's a good.
Correct, if that city council member on the board gets pulled off the city council or whatever and stuff, you know, midterm, then.
Right, I mean, there's ways that you can deal with that. You have a vacancy and then you find, you know, then you find a new member to the board. But, yeah, I mean, either way, I don't.
But if that member's a part of the city council member, I guess that just limits our options as far as what to do.
Right. The only thing that I was thinking that it would promote is it's a, you know, if you want to have a liaison, but it's a way that then the council has, you know, options to be a part of it. I, you know, I guess if I'm there, it doesn't really matter either way. It doesn't matter to me, you know, at the end of the day.
But the mayor would think he'd want a liaison, but I just don't think they should be appointed.
Right, yeah. But certainly, I mean, the council can certainly, I mean, this is their ordinance.
I agree that, I don't know that we need to have a council member on the actual board. It's kind of a double. They're kind of doubling up if we're overseeing the board.
Library board does not have a council member.
Yeah, if it's not, that way it's in any way that's systemic.
Well, like I said, anybody can come in and sit through the.
Right, they can. Yeah, the library board is set up by the Code of Iowa. I mean, for specifics, so this is, this is basically our ordinance, however, you guys, I mean, you guys want to set it?
I'll take the blueprints, you know, but the, we've got something that we can run with a little bit and so I think it's, the mayor can always be there.
And recently involved.
So, I mean, we can certainly strike first chance. Bren's had to look at this.
Yeah, this is the first. I mean, we discussed it, but yeah, this is the first time I've seen the draft here.
Okay, like I said, it was a working document until like three o'clock today and then it imploded on itself. So my intent was to send it to you, but it just.
It's fine to start.
So let's, let's put together an actual document that we see and then we can.
Put those changes in there.
Yeah, I can strike out the one council member, the council member person.
But have a liaison, but we do have boards.
They don't always show, but at least we'd have one there.
Okay.
Especially on the initial start.
We'd hope if we appoint somebody, as long as they don't show up.
With no, with no voting authority.
I mean, because it's going to save them. They still report to the council.
In area twenty-six point three, under the appointment and the qualifications, what is the plan for identifying the qualifications or the kind of the vetting of folks to be on the board? The process prior to the appointment?
I'd like to make sure the first board have people on it that have been involved in this for some time.
So, through an application process?
How do we, how do we do the planning zone?
We beg for something there.
Yeah, those are usually just.
They still have to fill out an application.
Correct.
And those are submitted to the mayor then, the applications and discussion with the council? Theresa. Theresa, she'll share them with me. If I'm being.
Well, I don't know, do you want to, do you want to add that? Do you want that to be part of the, of the ordinance? Or does that, is that necessary for it to be in there?
I, I would, I would advocate to have an application process because you are then able to really see the skills of the folks that are interested. For instance, if you have ten people apply and sixty percent of them have finance backgrounds, well, you don't want to appoint all of the ones with that because in a board, you want strengths and differences, which you've made clear in twenty-six point oh-six with responsibilities of the board. There'd be, you know, twelve different areas. Some of those do mesh and blend. However, if you have all of the same color of the table, you're only going to get that one perspective and those, and similar ideas. You want to have some strength in differences that all move in the way of growing the same way of the success of the community center.
Just a different set of eyes on different.
We want it to be diversified and the people that have certain skills.
You guys need to have a final, you need to have a final draft before you guys can vote on it. Well, you can, then you can motion to not, to go through it, but you need to have the final draft in front of you.
So you're gonna put all this together for me?
I will put it all together and I will send it out to everybody now that it's pretty much put together. I will send it out to everybody prior to the next meeting and see if you guys have any other changes that come up any beforehand. So it's in a final draft status.
Okay.
The, the other piece that lends to the application is where you point out in the last kind of two and a half sentences of twenty-six oh-three that it's going to be based on background education and experience. So in order to put judgment to that, you have to know that information and that should be in writing. So therefore, you're, you're really.
So do we think that having an application process put into the ordinance or do you just think that that's just the way that we plan to do it is fine?
The way we do it's fine.
Yeah, I don't disagree on having an application because how do you know that you're gonna have, you know, somebody can say they have all the marketing experience in the world, but, you know.
Well, how are you, yeah, how are you to know unless you're going to interview each person?
Yep.
That's why I would, I would have application as part of the process.
It brings some transparency, transparency to the process. You know, people, at least the candidates know too, what, you know, what's being looked at as far as the qualifications and everything and stuff. Does not be select on, you know, who knows who, that type of deal.
It's also a best practice and I've been the president of at least five boards and it's a best practice that will put you in the best position to have an effective board.
We didn't have to beg everybody.
But if you don't have the application process within the ordinance written, it would seem to me that someone could challenge that. Agreed. I would include it in the ordinance.
I think, all it is is adding a sentence or something.
I'll look for, I'll figure out some wording.
Anything else? Anything you can do? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.